We are going to be hearing today about the Costco poultry plant in Fremont and how it relates to the Lincoln water supply. And we're having Donna Garden present, so please take over. Donna?
Thank you Chairman Christensen, and thank you council members for giving me this opportunity to talk to you about this today. John, Carlson, Steve Owen, and I did a lot of work at the first half of this year to take a look at the information that we could get on the various things associated with the Costco operations in Fremont.
Hold on just a moment. Can everybody back there hear her? Okay, they're hearing her better than we are actually, so it's okay.
Okay.
We got this.
Okay.
Got the air up there.
Turn it off, but it's a lot more comfortable if you turn it on.
Yeah, we'll leave the fan on.
Ninety-two degrees out. We had a lot of inquiries when Costco first announced that they were going to, or considering looking at a plant in Fremont, and the associated producer barns that were going to go up around Fremont at that time. So we had a lot of inquiries about, does this impact Lincoln at all, and things of that nature. And obviously, as a Lincoln Water System and the City of Lincoln employee, our main mission is to provide safe, reliable, quality drinking water to our customers. And we wanted to maintain that mission long into the future, so we wanted to make sure, and do our due diligence, to make sure we knew what the answers were to that. So there was a number of public meetings that were held, particularly two, one in Omaha, one in Lincoln. I attended the one here in Lincoln, and a number of concerns became evident from that meeting. They had a number of speakers at the meeting that were from various areas, particularly with issues associated with chicken plants and things of that nature. But here are the main concerns that came out from those meetings. One, will nutrients be increased and require additional treatment and expense? And obviously, we have to continue to supply safe drinking water to our citizens, so if pollutants did increase in our intake water, we would have to treat them and remove those pollutants before we could pass on to our constituents. Are Fremont's wastewater plant upgrades adequate? Fremont is actually undergoing a major upgrade on their wastewater treatment plant. It wasn't associated with the Costco plant originally, so we wanted to make sure that those upgrades were adequate to handle the additional wastewater that was going to be treated. Are there numeric permit limits for nutrients like nitrates and phosphorus in their permit when those permits come out? And there are lots of numbers came out with regard to this project. The very large number of chickens that would be processed in a relatively large area. How would all that chicken manure be handled, and will that impact water quality? And what are the opportunities for public comment? So, we went out to take a look at what we could find out for information. Let's step back a little bit and talk about what's actually being built in Fremont. In Fremont itself, they have about 417 acres southeast of Fremont that they're going to have a facility, hatchery, and a feed mill all located there. That processing facility, and the hatchery, and the feed mill will all work together with the producer barns in the surrounding counties. At full capacity, the hatchery will produce about 2 million chicks per week. That's a lot of chickens. If you look at, in terms of turnover in the barns, it's about 17 million chickens a year will be processed in that area. So it's a lot of chickens. The numbers are very large. Hundred and twenty to 125 independently owned producers will grow the chickens under contract to Costco, and each one of those producers will have four barns on their property, so it gets up there in terms of the number of barns. It would be pretty large. All producers are within 60 miles of Fremont in an 11-county area. So you might think that's a relatively small area, but it is, from a standpoint of a footprint, gives it ability to transport these chickens. You don't have to transport them a long way. The feed mill will produce all of the feed and be able to be transported to the producer barns fairly quickly. And 150,000 tons per year of chicken litter will have to be land-applied. So who regulates this actual process? NDQ is the Environmental Regulating Authority, and of course, the City of Fremont has zoning authority over the Costco plant itself on site. And the City of Fremont will be treating all of the wastewater from the processing facility under state and federal requirements. I don't have noted here that the county also has some zoning and siting responsibilities associated with the producer barns.
Donna, when you say county, do you mean, is it Dodge County?
It is Dodge County that Fremont is in. But each of the counties will have the ability, if there's 11 counties associated with these barns, each of the counties will be able to have some siting authority over that.
But if Lancaster is not one of the participating counties, what authority do we have?
We really don't. Our only real process here is to make sure that we don't have something where we need to talk to one of these regulating authorities to be able to influence their decisions, and that's what we wanted to find out. I also want to take some time to step back just a moment and talk about where our water comes from. Our water, Lincoln's water comes from well fields. This is groundwater aquifer. This is not direct ties to the river, the Platte River. Although the Platte River and the Loop River and the Elkhorn River, which the Elkhorn River is where this wastewater will discharge into, do influence our levels of water in our groundwater. So those areas do influence it, but we don't actually get water directly from those river sources. So this, earlier this year, after this information came out, we decided that we wanted to go out and find the information out for ourselves. So we had some direct talks and had meetings associated with the Nebraska Department of Environmental Quality to find out what permitting was actually going to occur. We actually joined forces with MUD, Metropolitan Utilities District of Omaha, and worked together to talk to the other entities that were associated with this facility. And that included Costco itself and Lincoln Premium Poultry, which is a subsidiary, I believe, of Costco, to discuss their schedule and protections included in their proposals. We met with the City of Fremont to discuss their schedule, design, and operation of their city wastewater treatment facility, which will be processing Costco chicken, processing wastewater. I do want to mention that Nebraska Department of Environmental Quality also is responsible for approving the construction plans for their wastewater treatment facility, so that was also part of our discussion with NDQ. So what we found out, in kind of a nutshell, from talking to at least the regulating community, was that both the City of Fremont's wastewater treatment facility and the producer farms were going above and beyond what's required by state and federal regulations. If you look strictly at the wastewater treatment plant in Fremont, they're doing a $25 million upgrade. It's not insubstantial. It's a fairly sizable upgrade. All wastewater from the processing plant in Fremont will go through their wastewater treatment facility. They will not have a separate discharge of their own. So if we're concerned about any type of heavy pollutant-laden wastewater coming from a chicken processing plant, it's all going to be processed through the Fremont wastewater treatment facility. Their new facility will remove a higher percentage of nitrogen than they do today. They're removing, from 57% today, it will be up to 70% when their upgrade is complete. And for all of you that really want to know about wastewater treatment, and I've added the last bullet point here, which their upgrade includes a dedicated anoxic zone for denitrification. There are three steps that take place in a wastewater treatment plant. The first is most of the nitrogen that comes in, comes in as ammonia. It goes through a biological reactor where we add oxygen to it. That oxygen turns it into nitrate. And of course, we don't want nitrate in our discharge water either, so the next step is to go through a non-oxygen or anaerobic zone, anoxic zone, and it takes it and turns it into simple nitrogen, which enters the atmosphere and is out of our wastewater at that point. And in fact, these pictures are of Teresa Street that you see here, and I know they're kind of hard to see, but what Fremont's putting in looks very similar to what we have at our wastewater treatment plant at Teresa Street. So we're very familiar with it, we're very comfortable with the technology, and think it's a very good technology. Let's talk about the producer barns, and I think this is where most of the concern comes from, from our citizens, is that those producer barns, there's an awful lot of chickens, there's an awful lot of manure, the numbers are just very big. But the really interesting thing about Costco is what they've told us, is that all the producer barns are required to obtain a DEQ permit and implement a nutrient management plan as part of their contract. And producers could be terminated from their contracts if they violate those plans or those permits. That's an added safeguard that would not be there otherwise, because from the regulations, they would not be required to get permits under our current state law. And we feel those nutrient management plans were pretty substantial, and that they would protect against overapplication of nitrogen. And we expect that it to be a replacement, this litter would be a replacement for other sources of nitrogen, such as anhydrous ammonia or other commercial fertilizer. And we know from experience, both from our own biosolids program to other areas, that organic nitrogen is much less mobile. It doesn't wash out of the soil as easily as commercial-grade fertilizers do. The nutrient management plans also will be monitored by a third party. They've hired another company to actually generate these nutrient management plans for the producer barns, and those companies will actually be onsite to make sure that those nutrient management plans are followed. And this last bullet point here is no arsenic will be fed to chickens, and that's an interesting one for me to throw on. You wouldn't think you'd feed arsenic to chickens. But we actually did have some concerned citizens talk to us about chicken feed does sometimes contain arsenic in order to fatten the chicken up much faster. And of course, arsenic is something we don't want in our water supply. They are not planning to feed arsenic to the chickens. In fact, they want chickens of a very certain size that they can sell for a price point for their rotisserie chicken processing at Costco. The litter containing the chicken manure will be used as a replacement for, not addition to nitrogen fertilizer. And the interesting thing about the litter in those barns is that they do a composting process. Where it's not removed, every time there's a new batch of chickens that come in, it actually gets composted, and it goes through an air timeframe where they actually reuse it a number of times in the barns. It actually will only be land-applied once or twice a year on the area surrounding the barns. They also requiring a certain amount of acreage, obviously, that you have to have in order to put this litter down, so that it's not overused on that amount of ground, and it seems to be the adequate amount of land, from what we can tell. The numbers of chickens, the amount of manure appears to be managed well by the plans that the company has put out. So let's talk about the actual impacts that we've seen to the Platte River. Now, we're assuming that those producer barns are not going to add any more nutrients to the Platte River, because they are managed under a nutrient management plan. And if there weren't chicken manure being used, their commercial-grade nitrogen would be used there, so we don't see a net increase from the producer barns. This is what we're seeing actually from what the nitrogen will be coming from that wastewater treatment plant after the processing facility has been included. And what we've got right now, I've got here listed, keep in mind that the drinking water MCL, maximum contaminant load, is 10 milligrams per liter in our drinking water. And the other thing to keep in mind is that we don't take this directly from the Platte River, so this is the worst-case scenario. We have groundwater that feeds our wells. But if you look at the current Platte River concentrations right now, our lowest flow in August of 2012 registered .4 milligrams per liter of nitrate. Now, the interesting thing you'll see here is the high flows, those numbers are much larger. And you would think just the opposite as a concentration. You would think that the nitrogen would go up when the lower, there's not as much dilution in the river. But nitrogen comes from runoff, and we see that go up as rainwater comes down and fills our river. So those high flows actually carry more nitrogen with it. If we look at what happens with the numbers that we're getting from, both from the DEQ plans and from the plans that Fremont has given us, and from their consultant, those low flows and high flows change very little. You're going from .4 milligrams per liter to .57 milligrams per liter in a low-flow situation, and 3.8 to 3.81 in a high-flow situation. So we're seeing very little change. Granted, it is a change, but it's not a big change affecting us. And if you look at it on an average, this is, I talked about the low flow and the high flow. This is an average impact on the Platte River. You can see this, it is very small impact overall. We see a 1.99 milligram per liter is pretty much where we are right now, average, in the Platte River. And we see the project impact of about .01 milligrams per liter. I've also got, if you note that kind of blue bubble down below where it shows average Lincoln Water System POE. POE stands for Point of Entry. That's the water that actually is going to our distribution system. And you'll see there's a sizable difference between that number and what's actually in the Platte River. So from whatever, we have some different things that are going on chemically and microbial-y that actually change that number as it goes through the aquifer and gets into our water system. Our treatment plan itself also removes some nitrate, even though it's not actually built to do that. So we do have, it's slightly less, actually, it's considerably less than what you see in the river at any given time. So the conclusions we made were that Lincoln's water quality should not be significantly impacted with the implementation and enforcement of treatment and nutrient management plans. We want to make sure that that's the key there, is they seem to have adequate safeguards in place, but obviously, those have to be carried out. Both MUD and Lincoln Water System are recommending continued monitoring, as we always do and always will, of our water quality, and continued communication with the City of Fremont, and Costco, and Lincoln's Premium Poultry. There are opportunities for public hearing if our citizens would like to go out and comment on the various permits that are coming up for review at NDQ. Costco Processing Plant has a pre-treatment permit with Fremont and with the state. That will come and be out for a public hearing, well, actually, they'll take public comment. You can request a public hearing for any of these. The producer barns will have ag permits with DEQ, and of course, the Fremont Municipal Wastewater Treatment Plant has an NPDS permit, just like we do at both of our treatment plants. And they will probably have a modification associated with the increased loading from the processing facility, but they obviously do have a renewal in 2019 coincident with the Costco operation. And both of their, both the upgrades and the operations of the Costco Processing Plant are coincident, and will happen at that 2019 timeframe. I've got any questions?
Thank you very much. Are there questions? Jane?
I have a number of questions, Donna, and I'll just run through probably about the first three. I guess, I know you mentioned NDQ will also be doing some of the monitoring, but from what I understand, their staff has been cut down considerably, so should we be concerned about the monitoring requirements of NDQ, and can they fulfill them? And then, also, the producers that are out there, I wasn't clear on who hires that third-party inspection, and how often do they inspect and test the discharge from them? And do we have a baseline already about what is the current discharge from Fremont into the Platte River, or the Elkhorn River, then the Platte River? And I know you gave the scenario in a heavy rain with the runoff, but I guess, how is Fremont Treatment Plant expected to process that? And then, if there is a runoff with the producers, how can they possibly keep up with treating that on their end?
Okay, let me separate that a little bit. First of all, the processing plant that actually takes the chickens from the producers and cleans them, packages them for sale at the retail stores, that is an operation that uses a lot of water. And that water, that wastewater from that operation will go through the wastewater treatment plant at Fremont. The producers that are actually growing the chickens in the barns do not have a wastewater treatment, I'm sorry, wastewater discharge. They actually land-apply the composted material, it's dry, it's not a liquid manure, onto their lands for fertilizer. They don't have a discharge from those facilities that discharge into any of our waterways. So it's only runoff from the land application that could potentially get into our riverways.
But with all those additional barns, wouldn't it be anticipated, like your slideshow, that there would be an increase in the runoff from all those additional barns? And how, who would be monitoring that?
Are you referring to the ag ground around it, or?
Well, I guess your slideshow that when there was heavy rains, the nitrate levels increased. And so if you're increasing the number of barns, maybe it's...
See, what we're looking at is ag ground to begin with. And most, all ag ground has fertilizer associated with it. So what they're doing, instead of adding, they're not adding additional nitrates, they're actually replacing nitrates. Most frugal farmers would do that. If they have a manure source on site, they would use that instead of commercially purchased nitrates or nitrogen. So you're not actually making a net increase. If you're doing a nutrient management plan, you're maintaining a certain level of nitrogen in the soil, and if you're growing corn, or beans, or anything else, using that land, that's not going to change, because you have chicken manure instead of commercial-grade.
No, but who has oversight of making sure that the producers' plans are in conformance to environmental safety requirements, to prevent the runoff from their land, instead of just being hauled by farmers to fertilize their fields? The stuff that's composting on the producer's land, that they're going to probably recycle into the barns as manure, what's going to prevent that from being part of the runoff that is in typical ag lands? And then, second of all, you know, with the waste, but also with the disposal of the carcasses and things like that, how is that going to be handled?
Yeah, the carcasses are going to be composted as well, so that's part of their composting process onsite on the barns. Let me get back to your, in terms of who actually regulates that. If they do get a permit with DEQ, those nutrient management plans will be required to be followed. And I guess the second piece of that kind of follows with, do we have enough enforcement capability at DEQ? And that's really something that I would have to leave to DEQ to address. But I can tell you, from the wastewater treatment plant side, we at Teresa Street and Northeast fill out our discharge monitoring reports every quarter. They track not only states, in the state, but on a nationwide basis through EPA. And certainly, the enforcement capability is there as well. So I guess that's the best I can answer that, in terms of there's no difference between how we're monitored, which is, we take samples every day, and we turn in reports every quarter in terms of what we actually discharge to waterways.
Now, do we have the baseline numbers for what is currently being discharged into the Elkhorn and into the Platte?
Yes, we do. And I do believe in the packet that I sent out last week, there was a chart in there that had all of that information. And that was provided by the City of Fremont's consultant, HDR.
Now, does the Teresa Street plant, does it have the capability or the capacity to be able to do the denitrification that you said is, already does, as sort of an aside, but should those numbers shift or become critical? Does it have the potential to do additional denitrification without upgrades or enhancements?
There would probably be some upgrades involved, so, but it does have the capability. It has similar structures, and has both the anoxic and aerobic zones that I was speaking about with Fremont.
Benny, you have a question?
I did. And this is still a little new to me, but I want to go further back to slide number 14, the one about the review on the impact. And the number you came up with was 10 milligrams per liter for nitrates nano. How did you get to that number, and how does that compare to other communities? That's a maximum...
Let me go back, I think, back here. This one?
No.
Yep. Okay. The maximum contaminant load is 10 milligrams per liter. That's actually a limit. That is the maximum you can have in your water at any given time. So if we'd even become close to that, say, 8 milligrams per liter, we'd be building something to treat for nitrates, because we do not want to reach that 10 milligrams per liter in our drinking water.
And that's a federal standard?
Yes, it is. Safe Drinking Water Act.
And the other numbers in the bottom of the screen, you showed that we're, even in the high flow, we're about a third of the way.
That's right. And actually, that's river water. That's not drinking water. So you're going to see something that's probably about 60% of that.
Larry?
Thanks, Donna, for all the information. It's really helpful. And in thinking through what you've told us, one of the statements you've made to help us feel reassured is that the contaminants and whatever might be in the river are very distinct and separate from what might be in the groundwater we have our wells. Can you talk more about how you see a strict separation between those two, when many might think there's a connection? And then, secondly, if there was contamination in the water, if in fact, the numbers that you're monitoring were to indicate pollution that's bad for Lincoln, what would the city be able to do in response to that, to protect citizens and our quality of our drinking water?
I'm going to start with your first one first. Okay. We actually do testing, we're testing underway right now on our horizontal wells, where they actually look at any kind of microbial organisms, particulates, things like that, that would indicate there's a direct link to surface water. And that usually is just an influence based on the time of year, things of that nature. But our vertical wells, for instance, all of the 40 vertical wells that we have right now are not under the influence of surface water. And we're testing the horizontal collector wells right now for that, to make sure. We do have ozone disinfection, we have chlorination, and we have chloroamines on our east plant that handles those horizontal collector wells, because they are more subject to Platte River water than the other vertical wells that we have.
Horizontal wells are?
Yes.
Why is that?
I'm going to turn around and ask Mr. Eric Lee, who's here as part of that. Do you want to come on in?
Sure. Like Donna said, I'm Eric Lee. I'm the operations supervisor up at the Ashland Treatment Plants, so I handle the well fields, the treatment plants area up there. Most of you have been up for a tour up there before, so I recognize you of that. Those horizontal collector wells are really large-capacity wells. Typical vertical well may be 2 million gallons a day production capacity. These wells are close to 17 to 20 million gallons a day production in each of these wells. They're located very close to the banks of the river or on an island in the river, and so generally, they're in closer proximity to that surface water. But all those wells, whether they're vertical or horizontal, do have anywhere from 50 to 70 feet of sand filtration through them. So that's the major difference between those two types of wells.
John, then Carl?
Wait, I'm sorry, should you get that?
Yep.
Okay, sorry.
Because you repeat your other side of your question.
Well, let's say that this doesn't turn out how we all want it to, and let's say there is contamination of our drinking water. What is the response? How does Lincoln protect citizens? What happens if human helpers are found? How do you respond?
I think obviously, we're going to be watching and talking with Fremont, and just like they have access to our discharge monitoring reports, we have access to their bits of public information, just like anything else with DEQ. We can certainly track that and make sure that the nitrogen removal coming from the plant is adequate, and certainly keep that line of communication open with them. Obviously, we have to be able to talk to DEQ about protecting our water supply, and be able to participate in permits as they become renewed over time. That's our best option for moving forward with any, if anything should go wrong. I don't, I think they were talking in legislature about doing something to bring this back to the chicken operation if they see anything particular that happens. I don't know if that, I don't believe that went anywhere this legislation, this latest season, sorry. So those are our options, to work with our regulating community in order to be able to do a change. And if that, obviously, we have to provide clean drinking water. So if we have to build something to remove those pollutants, that's what we would have to do.
As an intermediate step, we would continually monitor the Platte River and our well field for nitrogen, increased nitrogen. And then, as noted in some of the slides and information that Councilman Rabel had cited about runoff events, one of the options we have to do
it contains any high nitrogen. And usually, Lincoln does not need the water during that time because it's rained, producing those runoff events. So we just would shut those wells off and rely on the vertical wells for production during that time and allow that spike of nitrate to move down the river before we restart up.
But in terms of having to provide clean drinking water and potentially having to take steps in the event that your monitoring discovers pollutants, there's surely a cost associated with increased treatment. What is the potential for recovering those costs in general? Is that something you've ever had to deal with in the past? And how might you envision doing that?
I don't know if I can adequately answer that. I mean, I know there's been lawsuits around the country for various other aspects, not necessarily nitrates, that have, some have succeeded, some haven't. I'd have to do some more research on that one to be able to answer that adequately.
Okay. John, then Carl, then Jane.
I have a few questions on your slides, and while you've got this one up that Mr. Shob was asking about. Help me understand, you have a post Costco numbers there? And you also use an August 2012, but I mean, Costco wasn't there, so help me understand how you-
No, we're just looking at the mass balance of knowing what additional nitrogen's coming from that plant. We just include it in the same flows that we used for the low-flow calculation above. So you're looking at the same flow rates in the river and just knowing that there's an additional mass of nitrogen in there, how much that would actually impact it. So it is hypothetical. I mean, in terms of, it's, obviously, they weren't there.
On page, I guess it'd be slide three, you had concerns raised by citizens, and you had one of the bullet points, our Fremont wastewater plant upgrade is adequate. You kind of read that. Can you describe a little further what it's doing to make sure that it's adequate or exceeding what is necessary to ensure the water that they're treating out of the plant will be all right?
They're, yeah, they're actually putting in that biological reactor I talked about, which is basically to provide an aerobic and an anoxic zone for removal of nitrogen. And that's very similar to what we have at Teresa Street right now.
So when you say, you use the word adequate, is it, is it just marginal average, or does it provide additional protection that's above and beyond?
It provides more protection than they've got right now. So there's actually more nitrogen removal than they have the current ability to do right now. And in terms of what it will discharge, the effects on the river seem that they will be, it will provide adequate protection for the river.
Just want to make sure I understand the definition of adequate.
Adequate. No significant increase, I guess, is the-
Okay.
Okay. Carl? You got one more.
Okay, backfining on page five, so it'd be maybe slide 11, you said here, a higher percentage, 57% to 70% of nitrate will be removed. So you're saying that under current, it's 57%, which is what Costco is doing and I guess Fremont is doing, it will raise that to a 70% removal? Is that what-
Correct. Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Arsenic?
Yes.
That's something that we track in our water supply currently. Important, those are health issues that come with too high of a level, and so we, obviously, that's a concern. They've indicated that they will not use arsenic in feed, but what's to prevent them from doing that in the future? How is that going to be monitored? What kinds of protections do we have as a community for our water system?
Well, obviously, and I think Eric will say this too, we'll continue to monitor that on our own end. They're producing their, all of their feed there at the, their feed mill on site. I'm not sure if we will have the ability to check on whether they're using arsenic or not. The only thing we have to go on is what they've, they've told us. And that is that they would not because they did not want to have very large chickens. They're looking at a certain sized chicken specifically for their process of the rotisserie chicken operation and to meet a certain price point. So that's the best information we have right now. And again, we'll continue to monitor it on our side to make sure that we don't have a problem.
Then, kind of a related question is, it's not only the, the flows we can see in the Elkhorn and the Platte River, there's also underground flows that similarly happen with bones, and we've seen contamination of underground water from the, getting close to the Lincoln wellfields that's monitored, expensive process that's done with the Army Corps of Engineers there. What, what kind of underground water channels would be going that direction toward our wellfields?
I don't know if I've got that information.
Yeah. In general, groundwater movement will still be the same direction. It's always been kind of, let's say, from a point of reference, the Fremont meat area toward our wellfield area. So we've got the capabilities, like you said, to monitor for some of the more expensive exotic organic contaminants. And nitrate can be and probably is included in some of that background monitoring that we do in association with USGS studies. So that would be groundwater monitoring probably prior to our wellfield. And then, of course, we do our own groundwater and river nitrate monitoring within the wellfield.
All of these things are, are done at expense to Lincoln water users. Editor of comment.
Jane?
Well, one of the questions I asked, who does the, the third-party monitoring? Who hires the third-party? What are the qualifications of these third-party? Are they on like a list of approved by NDEQ? And then, just to follow up, how often do we monitor our water? Is it on a daily basis or weekly basis? I mean, how quickly would we be able to flag something? And you see trends and other, other things that we know, or seasonality, but, so I'm kind of hung up on the third-party monitors.
And Lincoln Premium Poultry did hire the third-party company. It's called Nutrient Advisors LLP, I believe. And they are a company that's registered here in Nebraska. They do nutrient management plans for lots of other agricultural cattle feed operations, all kinds of things like that. They're not sanctioned by DEQ, so to speak, but they follow the same procedures in terms of developing those nutrient management plans that have to match up with what the permit requires. So it's a separate company, but they were hired by Lincoln Premium Poultry.
And so the producers would also be hiring them to come out and verify that their operations as set up are in compliance with all the environmental controls that are needed?
Yes, and I think it's actually Lincoln Premium Poultry who has hired them to do that for all of the producers. So as part of their contract, they will have to sign on with the nutrient management plan and allow this company to come in and make sure that they're meeting the requirements of their contract.
Okay. And do the producers have to pay for that, or is that something Lincoln Poultry provides as part of the, the cost of production, or?
And I don't think I can answer that one.
And then monitoring?
Monitor.
John.
John Keith.
I'll turn that over to my-
We got him.
I'm John Keith. I'm the laboratory manager up at the city of Lincoln Water System. Monitoring, right now, we're doing it on a weekly basis, but we can change any of our monitoring to a daily basis. We are collecting samples throughout the treatment plant from the raw water source all the way to everything that goes out. So I mean, it's, right now, we have new instrumentation in the lab that we can run the arsenics in that case there and run it more often, but also we have instrumentation that does nitrates and nitrites as nitrogen. So we can do those on a daily basis. I think probably the plan would be is to go forward, once they come in, kind of start an aggressive plan, maybe do a daily monitoring and kind of get a tracking on that. And if we need to, we can go to weekly or back up to daily if more often, if necessary.
And so you already have the baselines for nitrates, phosphates, E. coli, the works, right?
Okay. John, then Leirion.
Maybe wrapping up all of the discussion of the work you've done over the past several months on this. What's your bottom-line conclusion as far as the safety for Lincolnites and their water supply?
I think in terms of what we've seen from what they are proposing for getting their permits and for the nutrient management plans, for the processing plant that there is, for the wastewater treatment plant, we do not think there is any significant impact on Lincoln Water System at this time. MUD is feeling the same way. They've also addressed their board with that information. Again, as long as they go through with what they have proposed for us at this point in time, we don't see a significant impact.
Any other comments from the actual operations standpoint?
Yeah.
I feel the same way myself. Yeah, I would agree with that. And we'll probably step up, you know, our nitrogen monitoring. Nitrogen traditionally has not been a big issue for us as a contaminant, like a lot of other Nebraska communities that we'll see. We've done a lot of baseline monitoring. We're very comfortable with where we are. We've looked at the loading proposed by this new project from, from the wastewater flow from the plant. We feel it's pretty small loading, but it would be in our best interest to continue and even step up maybe a little bit more down a 30-month range for this.
Once this is in operation, would it be possible, say, to help us as the city council and the mayor's office to have some reports on a periodic basis of what you're observing so we can see in practice how the levels are versus what you projected?
We'd be happy to-
I think that'd be a report, because without water, we don't exist.
Exactly. And we'd be happy to provide that.
Okay. Leirion?
My question's related to what John just finished with, and that is, do you publish the data on your water monitoring, water quality monitoring right now? And if not, could this be put into practice and published in real time on the Open Data portal so that people who want to pay attention to it, not just us, but the public, could have that kind of transparency?
And we do release a consumer confidence report every year. It's a new one that's on our website and available to anybody who would like to take a look at it. If you'd like more real-time information, we certainly would be happy to provide that moving forward with this. Absolutely.
Jane?
One last question, sorry. I know, I got a report that was done by Johns Hopkins, the Center for a Liveable Future. And after they reviewed probably some of the current setup and programs that are being established by the plant, they felt that there was insufficient monitoring and enforcement and even compliance of, of having sufficient requirements established by Fremont City Council. Do you feel comfortable going forward that there are sufficient requirements and enforcement capability established by Fremont City Council and, and certainly with the oversight from NDEQ?
I think that report, and I'm familiar with that report, stated a lot of different issues associated not only with water but air quality and some of the other issues associated with truck traffic and things of that nature. And I wasn't clear on that statement whether they were referring to the water quality piece or whether they were referring to that, or were they referring to all of it? I do feel that the DEQ does provide adequate monitoring on this. They know what's coming out of the wastewater treatment plant. They do have all of the information prior to the upgrade, prior to the Costco operation going in, that we can compare to. That information is all available to us, so we can keep, we can keep track of it as part of our due diligence as well. As for the Producer Barns, I am, I am very encouraged. In fact, it's very unusual in the state of Nebraska to require smaller operators, and I know this doesn't sound like a small operator, but each one of them would not require a permit under normal circumstances. And I'm very encouraged that, that Costco has taken this extra step to enforce that and to make sure that those nutrient management plans would be in place and to make it part of the contract with those producers. So those things make me very encouraged that there are adequate enforcement there. Now, again, these things have to all fit together and work, move forward together, and we hope that they will. But because they've taken these additional safeguards, I think there, there is adequate enforcement and monitoring on this.
Okay. Other questions? Okay, we will adjourn, and I will immediately begin our directors and organizational meeting and try to provide the council members a substantial break between this-
We can't respond?
No, there's no public comment in this meeting. Thank you, sir. Thank you for being here. So we will adjourn, and now we're convened for our directors and organizational meeting. And we'll begin with the mayor's, well, we'll let you-